He is thoughtful to begin our meeting with pleasurable allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody got a chance for three minutes? I'll go first. Brown, Nelson. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Those are the bills, and we will include the Highway Department bills in that. Okay. Roll call please. Brown. Olson?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Hi sir. Aye. And we'll move on to the financial reports. Anything to take notice of? Do you have any issues here? Need to... Any questions to talk about? Everything looks right on schedule. A little more than a second to approve the financial reports. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. And we have a Treasury checks?
One to approve, second.
What's the juvenile court?
That they bring a check down, they may just issue them on that. This one we need to do a roll call.
Roll call please. Brown?
Yes.
Martins?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Hi sir. Aye. And the agenda. Anyone who's got anything they want to add up to it? Come on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The event is approved. For a little head, but if everyone is here that wants to eat for the alcohol server training portion?
Yeah. Okay, I'm Shayna Repidall with Lake Region District Health upstairs. And we recently went through the city and they approved ordinance 935, which is for responsible beverage server training. It is not mandatory at this time. Right now, we're offering it as a voluntary basis. And then if, in the ordinance, it states if the establishment fails anything on their compliance check, then they would be required for one year from that date to have all of their servers, server trained with the approved training course. And we have the information on that, and then I believe there's also a copy of the ordinance that was passed in your packets.
We have a chance to look at that. How many servers have you trained since we implemented the program through the district health unit?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe it's in the eighties.
Okay.
That have all been voluntary so far.
Are the facilities themselves sending their trainers to their servers to train?
Yes, some of them are. We've had a couple of establishments that have done training for all of their employees that were able to attend. So we have them about every six to eight weeks. And that's with the Devil's Lake City Police.
Is there a cost to the?
Nope, not to the employ... like the servers, there is no cost.
No cost?
No. And the ordinance that the city passed, they would be... if they fail that compliance check, they would be responsible for paying the fees required for, like the police officers' time and stuff. For their staff.
If there's eighty people that have taken it, how many of you think are out there that, you know, could take it? How many people work at establishments?
Um, there's quite a few. There's a lot of part timers. We've had a really good response within the city and a few of the county bars, but there's still quite a few that need to be trained. And with summer coming, we're offering another training here in about six weeks for those new summer employees.
And put to say, if you don't have the information, how much time does it take for you to do the training?
It takes about three hours to do the training. And then they cover all of like the city and the county rules and laws in that time as well.
And then the certification lasts for three years?
Three years, yep.
So what the district health unit is looking for is?
If the county would want to put in an ordinance or a regulation for like the county bars, similar to this, or if you guys have another one you'd like?
In looking at the ordinance then, would we put within the county of Ramsey except for under those conditions if we adopted the same policy?
And then Alan McKee said he called the attorney general, and you guys can as a county put something in effect, because you guys, I believe you guys?
Issue the licenses.
Issue the licenses for the county establishments.
Alan and I talked about this a couple months ago. They said they gave us the go-ahead, because he was going to call the issue.
Yep, he said they did.
So right now, it's discretionary to everybody, but how about the like the casual people that probably only come in, you know, when they're home from on vacation or something like that and help out. Is there an opportunity for them to take this anywhere else or online or anything like that?
Yep, there are several other cities in the state that offer it, and then it is available online too through, I believe this North Dakota safety counselor, they're looking at doing it online too. There might be a fee though associated, I want to say it was like thirty-five dollars if they do it by themselves.
I'm sure the establishment would help those people. I want to know if they come out?
Yes.
Who does the spot checks right now?
The city police or like the sheriff county.
Does the sheriff actually do spot checks on many facilities as well?
Yes.
I want to make sure they put in there.
Tough to use, we're taking.
Yes.
Making sure if we pass something, we could enforce it.
Well, it brings up a bigger question. The last time I think the counties ever redid their ordinance, Elizabeth and I were looking at it probably a year ago. It's like the late thirties, early forties, if the whole thing needs to be revamped. So we can get some from different counties and take a look at that.
Yeah.
Is it broken? I mean, do we need to fix it?
The old one's shot. I mean, it's like, it's got silly little things like your bars can't advertise and can't put a sign on the side of your building.
That's the overall ordinance and the issue and the license. And this would just be part of the whole collective.
So we could probably try to do a different process.
Any other discussion?
I like the idea. I just utterly thought that we're going to do what Lonnie said and relook at the ordinance as an overall whole and then include this as part of the ordinance in the near future. We should probably try to tackle that. But it's good to have the sun that looks not as terrible.
So would this be something that we would have collaboration between the sheriff's department and the health department in helping us to revamp and ordinance with you?
Well, I can... we can do it. I know Elizabeth and I looked at like the early county one a year ago. We can try to... it's nice to look at what other counties do, because generally with larger counties, Casper, Grand they go through issues on regular basis with them, and they can work out some kinks that we don't have to try to work out. Because I always like to get somebody else's established policies and try to stay away from the issues that you just try to graft it yourself.
I'm sure that Elizabeth can send our email and get the ordinance from ordinances from local surrounding people. But I think the association of counties would also be helpful. Maybe legal end of it or whatever, because I can talk to you on purpose. Aaron would be able to help with that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting this, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Katie's not here yet. That's not here yet. Stacy?
I'm here.
You're here?
We continue to have busy months with veterans. Last month was eighty-four as of Friday. So we're still keeping high numbers, makes things very busy. We're still finding a lot of Vietnam-era veterans who have never applied for anything. And it's going to be, a lot of guys are having serious health issues before they even consider looking at it. So if you know of someone in that era, tell them to please come in, because the health issues are... the longer they wait, the more severe they get, so. As long as you keep seeing numbers like eighty-four in a month, a month before was ninety-something, we're still seeing a lot of people coming in. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thanks Stacy.
Thank you.
Ah, Kristen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyday normal operation, things are going well. I was just invited to the college here, Lake Region State College, to work with the president and other first responding entities within the county on a tabletop exercise for an active internal threat. So that's in the works to do a tabletop. Maybe someday down the road leading to a full-scale event. And there's a lot of different properties we need to think about with the daycare there and considering they're adults and not underage minors. So it's a whole new perspective we're working on. One other thing that I had, I know it did sprinkle this morning. Yesterday, Saturday, and Sunday, we were in a very high fire in X-Rating. Today, we... they bumped us down this morning to moderate. Couple of counties around us and the Spirit Lake Nation have moved into a fire ban. I did call and fax you about this last week, Myrna, and we said we just kind of played it out. I have a resolution I tough and printed in anticipation of what you guys would like to do. It's not a mandatory thing, but your thoughts on it.
The only ban that's on right now is the Spirit Lake Nation ban.
Tower County is as well.
Oh, yeah, because we had that big fire.
There aren't any other other counties surrounding us. The nearest one would be Tower County, Spirit Lake Nation, Pierce County is, and I know Rolat County is. Those would be our nearest. Cavalier, Nelson County, Bethson County, they are not. We don't have to right now. Like I said, we were moved down this morning to moderate. I just wanted to bring it up as food for thought.
It's greeting up for the past, and that's helpful, but I did have to call the rural fire department on Thursday, maybe about ten o'clock last week, because there was a barely out of control fire down by the Furtens Hills elevator. And it was the possibility that it could have went in three directions and cut buildings. So I do understand and appreciate the fact that you've got that. I think maybe you should sign something like that, and then if we collaborate and decide that we should have implemented, then you have it signed already. Either that, or if you're going to be around, you can always come in and sign it.
At any time, whenever, and I have it worded just like I did last year, that it's only in effect when our danger zone ratings are high, very high or extreme, or we're in a red flag warning. It wouldn't be for a day like today when we're in a moderate fire danger zone.
And that's determined by?
The National Weather Service and I believe the state firearms authority.
It's been out, I'm sure, and now it's been out working in the fields and stuff like that. Do we need something like that?
Right, and today it wouldn't be in effect, because we're not in that higher rating. Like I said, I just wanted to bring it forward, food for thought.
Those stuff scare people off when burning like a cattail every morning. And they are right to burn.
We can, you know, have it.
Yeah, and driving around yesterday, there were, I'd give a say, over thirty fires that I saw that were cattails.
Well, this is the thing with burning, it's all about context. You know, are you burning out in the middle of a field and burning a cattail, it's low outfits, or are you burning in a place where you shouldn't be burning?
And like she said, not in the high-end depth how this, but, and I appreciate that, because there are people out working in the fields and stuff like that and monitoring fires, but at ten o'clock at night when you've got a fire that's way out of control and nobody monitoring it, that's scary for the people who live there.
We do need it to be passed, if we did it or when we did it, it would need to be passed as a board and whole. If we were to say we wanted to put one on Tuesday and Myrna came in and signed, it would only be good for a week until the board convening got together and made a motion and passed in all our favor, or the majority.
I think as long as we're aware, we'll take advice from, I would go along with that, that we can always implement it when you want to, but for now, I think we're okay.
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned.
Like you said, Bill, I didn't grasp one from here to here after your head.
Yeah, and that's very helpful.
And I'm wrong speaking, I have a whole meaning.
Yep, and I will. I just wanted, like I said, bring that food for thought, that was all. Other than that, short and sweet today.
Before you go, we got anything about family man flight?
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't say that too. I, last time I talked to Jamie was about two weeks ago, and I have not heard any updates. I was going to mention that too. I knew you thought it was on uncommissioned business, I apologize. So I'll wait to hear. She said she was going to talk to Mercy Hafidal, the last I talked to her, she was going to speak with their president and then go from there. And as soon as I hear something else, definitely let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin.
All right. First thing, we've got two more summer maintenance agreements. Motion aside.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do you have anyone else?
And it is all of them now, yes. Second, I need to order some signposts for inventory, and they're going to cost one thousand eight forty-eight eleven. Motion by second.
Roll call. Brown? Martins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Hi sir. Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, I got some quotes for lumber material for the new shop in Edmore. First, I want to ask if there's anyone else you think I should get quotes on before I read the numbers aloud.
Who's building next? I guess I missed that part.
Well, we might do part of it. I mean, we might hire somebody to put the shell up, and then we'll finish it ourselves. So I haven't bid that part out yet. This is just for the materials. So the house network, I haven't bid that yet. That'll be next. But the truck, it takes a long time to get the rafters built. That's why I did this one first, because it takes over four weeks to get rafters. At least that's what they told me.
How much should we budget for the building again?
Hundred thousand.
How big will it be?
It is forty-eight by sixty-four and sixteen feet tall. Like a three-stall.
Are you going to fence this?
We haven't thought about it. I know it's something we can do in the future, but no, right now, there's no plan of that. This is just, it'll be a stick-built type foundation building on top of the slab. So no poles, if that's what you're visioning. It'll be two-by-eights walls. But if there's nobody else you think I could take quotes from?
You did the two lumber yards in town and then?
In Langdon.
I'm sure you're going to need it. Part of it anyway.
Yeah, so, you know, this includes all the insulation, the fiberglass insulation and the inside metal, but right now, I'm thinking that maybe we could do that ourselves. Have somebody put the shell up.
And you guys do have experience with that.
Yeah. And that might change too, depending on how busy we get this summer. We got bridges put in, that kind of stuff, so. Anybody else I should take bids from?
I mean, we got both places in town. I mean, if we're not opposed to looking outside of town, I mean, I know like Wall Hall Building Center up in that area does quite a bit of business. Just a thought.
We can go to Grand Aards and Grand Orks too, but I don't know if they want to do.
I thought about that, and I thought I better stick.
I mean, if we want to stay locally, I mean, we got some pretty good bids here, so.
So ProBuild in Devil's Lake here is fifty-five thousand five sixty oh four. Lake Bumper in Devil's Lake is thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars and forty-three cents. And Langdon Building Center was a little bit at thirty-seven thousand seven thirty-four oh nine. And they were really competitive quotes. I mean, I hadn't spelled out how many two-by-eights and how many everything, so it was pretty fair.
Is this delivered?
Yes, it's delivered. All three of them were.
You got all your hard wire and everything else included there?
Yep, nails. Yep, everything. Everything was listed, doors, door locks, everything.
ProBuild and same specs?
Yep.
I'm really finding the wrong lumber yard.
We should save local. I think the question carries whether or not.
Go ahead, Lake Bumper.
I'll second that.
Anything else you wanted on that, Kevin, or?
Nope, just left it at this.
I was just going to say, you know, I guess the big question is, are you going to stay local for a thousand dollars?
In the discussion, we've had several discussions recently about bidding things, and we've always said we'd go with the lowest bid. They're a little bit out of our area, but I'm sure that a lot of those people shop Devil's Lake and come down here and fish and spend money there.
What's the legality of low bid versus keeping local?
There's a little bit of statutory, you know, you talk about the lowest responsible bid. So generally, what you try to do is you go with the lowest responsible bid. And then you can factor in other things, such as distance and service and things like that. Here, you didn't have to do the bidding, because it was under a hundred thousand dollars. If you go on over a hundred, you have to do the whole bid and bid bond and all that kind of stuff. So you bring out a good question as to lowest bid versus lowest responsible bid, and equal a thousand dollars more, because it's in town. I know in the past, the commission has bought patrol cars locally, which probably could have been purchased for five hundred or a thousand dollars less from Nelson's, which had a state bid over in Fergus Falls. So is there prior precedent, yeah, the commission has gone locally and paid a little bit more in the past? Is there anything hard and fast in the law? Off the top of my head, I don't think so. I could look at it again, but I don't think there's been any attorney general opinions on bids and bidding in the last year or two.
Whenever we did that, Lonnie, part of the argument was is that we had to find a place to, or wherever it was, the lower bid was at, it was at expense to go pick it up there. If this is delivered, all the actions are the same.
I just think we need to keep it in local. I mean, I know there are, Langdon's local also, but it's local in our community.
Well, I agree with you to the point, it's just I struggle with the two kind of where bills coming from, simply because, you know, where's our division line at? Where do we make the decision at? I mean, because, you know, we just awarded a vehicle last week where we didn't stay local, and it was over twenty-five hundred dollars. So where's the point? You know, that's all I'm asking. You know, we don't have, we have precedent that sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but we really don't have a specific way to handle it. And that's all.
We kind of have a policy of, one of the lowest bids. It sounds to me that they really wanted it.
Well, the part of it is Langdon's closer to it than Devil's Lake is. And that's probably the greatest share of your difference.
Wait, do you deliver it?
It's the delivery cost.
Those small businesses struggle just as like ours do, so. I think a lot of the Lake Bumper does pay real estate taxes, and Ramsey County, Langdon doesn't. That's why I get my arms around, so. I'm retired. Just over a thousand dollars. I have to sit in my brain room.
Is there any other discussion?
Do you have a preference?
I honestly don't. I don't have a problem with either one of those. I could work with either one. All three of them, though.
I'll call for the vote. Roll call please. Martins? Lightcon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Hi sir. Aye.
All right. Mel's Hager has got some utility permit. Permits, I just got these, so I don't have copies for everyone, but one of them is must border line underneath Ramsey County four. Right up there were, those new bins went in just north of Cell phone. Is everybody familiar with that? The only difference to our normal permit is it's not in case, but it has to be a... must be a continuous fused pipe with a rating of two hundred PSI or greater. So I guess I don't see, this is a water line, this one. So I don't see a problem with that myself, as long as it's continuous and it's got that two hundred pound rating. And they're going to board it, so. That's a paved road.
What did we decide at the last, the last time he asked for not him casing?
What we decided is we weren't going to change our normal permit for him, but we would look at every case by case, you know, if he agrees to put this fancy pipe, let's call it a fancy pipe. This is a good pipe in there, so we don't ever have problems with it in the future. Then yeah, we'll look at, consider doing it again. That was what we pretty much told him, in a nutshell.
We haven't been asking him to case him in the past.
We haven't, our normal permit, it has, everything has to be.
But this is a special pipe.
This is a pipe that's rating two hundred PSI. This is a pipe that's rating two hundred PSI and it'll probably never see thirty PSI, so. Or forty, maybe at the most.
There's a lot of traffic on that road. We'd be able to identify a problem, you know, a lot easier than we would out in, out in the countryside somewhere where there's not much traffic.
What are, uh, other county policies on, and state policy on casing versus non-casing?
Pretty, our, ours mimics the state's and pretty much everybody else's, but the state is allowing this high-pressure pipe with the continuous, they have to be continuous piece of pipe.
Yeah, it can't be.
It's gotta be a jointed. But they are allowing that fancy pipe.
A higher quality rate?
Just to keep the discussion going, I'll make a motion to allow it to continue this, if you understand.
I'll say.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? The motion carries.
Okay, and then he has one more out on the US, or Ramsey County one. Where those new houses are going up on the north side of the road, just east of Free, or west of Freezon. Here on the end, towards the intersection, that's where this one is. Intersection while I drive. And this is a sewer line, but it's the same two-inch, two-hundred-pound rated pipe. Same wording. If uncased, pipe must be continuous fused pipe with a rating of two hundred PSI or greater. So, this is a sewer line, which I don't know, you know how much pressure those sewer lines give, but it can't be much. It's just a, a small tunnel.
Plus the water line.
Two-inch.
You say from two-inch. Two-inch sewer line, that's.
Two-inch sewer line, boy.
Well, it's coming out of the grinder pump, so.
Great. There, there'll be some possible solids that went through a grinder going through it. And there'll be two homes on this line, so that's probably why the two-inch. Well, no, this, this'll be two homes and that's it. We probably won't allow.
There'll never be any other homes in line there?
He probably won't allow anybody else to hook up to it just because it's not even big enough for a third home. That's my guess. He was, if the third home showed up, I'm sure Nels would require them to draw another line because it's not gonna be big enough for three homes. Does that make sense? What the permit is for, for two homes.
So, it specifies that in there?
It does. It has the names of the landowners.
It has both landlord names, not a, and it's just for those two?
Yep.
And this is what we've done in the past?
This is a new one too, but this, again, this is a, you know, this fancy pipe, I mean, who've always had in the case, bid in the past. And again, the state would've done the same thing on this grinder pump. It's even less pressure. As long as there was no joint anywhere in the middle, and it also goes under the bike path, this one. So, there won't be a joint anywhere between bike paths and the road.
You know, as new technology comes, comes on, I think we'll find that, uh, we could change our policy for those situ, you know, for that kind of material, but, um, for now, it's nice to have it on a case by case so we know where it's at, we know what we're doing, but I'll make the motion to allow it, allow it for this situation.
I'll say, Mr. Scott.
Just one question to that. The, the state is doing the same thing here?
Yep, they require that. Good pipe, but yes, they are.
As long as it's specified specifically that it's only the two homes and it's non-jointed, then I would think we'll run it and roll call. Plus, you've got, what, two places now we can check and see and watch how this is working going forward.
It's like two and a half to three times the pressure, uh, limit that, that, that pipe will see, so it's, uh, it's probably the reason why the state was.
The state's probably got a dozen of these, but they're got it right now.
Worrying is getting to be way more economical than being.
And the pipes getting better now. Five years ago, they didn't have this, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
And the last one I had to bring up was we did get some fill for that basement, had more than, don't think it's gonna be a thousand dollars. I haven't seen the bill yet, but this has, uh, the case it is. No, no action.
What basement are you talking about?
On the house side.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm like, basement and.
We filled it in. Built it there. That's all I have.
Thanks, David.
Kate? Hi.
Aye.
Um, I have a proposal from U.S. Imaging to have some images from the scanning project that I had done last year, um, enhanced. We went through that project and we found some that they just weren't coming out well. And so, we sent some samples to U.S. Imaging and they sent back what, what kind of enhancements they could do. And it improved them very much, they're much more readable. This is for twenty-eight books out of the original eighty-two that we had done. And it's easier to do a whole book than it is to try to just pick and choose images. And these were the worst twenty-eight books out of the eighty-two where we had a higher percentage of bad images. I believe that this proposal from U.S. Imaging, um, will make the readability of those documents so much better. And because these are internal documents and the digital copy, copy is what everybody is using now, I felt that it was worth it to have them enhanced and improve the quality of them. The proposal is for four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eight cents. The budget balance, this will come out of the preservation fund and enter an account. And the budget balance on that account right now is twenty-nine thousand five hundred and the actual account balance is thirty-two thousand six hundred. So, there's plenty to cover the cost of this project. And so, I would like to ask for your approval to have it done.
I'll entertain the motion.
Of course. I'll say.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion, any other questions? Katie? Roll call, please. Burns? Brown?
Aye.
Laitman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Highsler?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, we have thirty-three tax equalization meetings that are scheduled. They'll be May seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth in the basement, um, of the courthouse. And all of our notices, um, of increase were sent last week, so everything's on schedule with that. The county tax equalization meeting will be scheduled for January, or be, sorry, June seventh at nine-thirty a.m. That's the first Tuesday in June. And then the state, uh, tax equalization meeting is August ninth, which is the second Tuesday in August. In May, uh, Christie and Jared will both be attending their first, uh, training class with the state of North Dakota. They go May ninth through thirteenth in Bismarck. It's, um, the fundamentals of real property appraisal and it's put on by the IAAO, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers. And it is a tested course, so we're looking forward to going to that and that'll be a, hopefully, a good week for them. I also have scheduled, we, I found we have some training available to us from over the years when we purchased our software. They allowed us, um, hours of training and so we have that available. We haven't had, used it much in the past. And I have a trainer coming up, um, tentatively June eighth and ninth, unless something changes in his schedule because of the state, um, or the county tax equalization meeting. He was kind of a little concerned about that time, but that was what was gonna work, he thought. And he will go out to homes with us and measure and with our software in hand and, um, just kinda get us all working together on the same page and, um, answering any questions we may have or anything that comes up. So, we're looking forward to that in the office also. And we did, um, just recently, uh, train, uh, attend the website training that was put on by Civics Plus that Steve organized. And it went really well for office. Our page is complete. Um, we put on all of our, um, forms and applications for any credits or exemptions that are out there available for people. We also put our contact information on and put photos of this office staff on there so people can, um, reach us. You know, it's a progress. We'll, we'll add more probably in the future, but, um, for now, it's ready for June to go live. And, um, but lastly, Jared and Christie worked together and they put all of our information on the farm residence exemption into kinda binded books and that so that we can just grab one, take the township and, um, go out. Uh, we'll be starting that in May with our witnesses in June to do all the measuring, but just because they have class and, and that kinda thing going on, I mean, we won't probably get, um, really far. And the weather depends on a little bit too, but, uh, June will hopefully be really strong in that, especially after our software trainer comes and that's some of that with us. And I think that's what we have going on right now.
Go ahead.
What do you see, uh, coming up with the, uh, evaluations for the?
I think, um, earlier in the year, I spoke to, and I didn't bring the actual numbers here, but, um, like I had said at that point, we are within the ten percent allowance. Um, however, we have in the past always tried to keep, um, the AIG land similar to with the residential land, around the ninety-five percent. If we wanted to do that, that would be a two percent increase to state in that area. And so, that will be something that you will have to decide, uh, make a motion on at the county tax equalization meeting.
And how about the residential, what do you see in, is that like a, across the board and then the appraisals for the new construction and stuff?
Um, no, nothing's across the board for us. We actually touched every single property, so some went up, some went down, and some stayed the same. I think that overall, our, um, I don't have any final numbers. I don't wanna give any final numbers yet because we haven't had our account, or our township meetings, there hasn't been an accounting meeting. But without using the AIG, um, I think we'll probably be similar increases last year money-wise or value-wise, um, overall, but, everything went well. We had quite a bit of commercial increase too and residential, so.
Sales ratio studies, are climbing?
The story was that.
The sales and the sales ratios, what studies show that, that presidential properties or then commercial properties are still climbing and done?
Yeah.
And that's not true statewide, so it's, our county is, is different than the others. I talked with the city and it sounds to me that, don't quote me, but it sounds to me like they're going up quite a lot, like nine percent.
You know, and that's a question for Gary Martinson, but I think they're seeing some increases, I should, for sure. Um, I think ours will be a little less, um, in, in that overall, but.
Right.
Any other questions for Beth? Thanks, Beth.
Good morning.
Valiant flight information, I guess we have nothing new to add on that. Unless it's, and add something, I, I have looked at different angles of how we would, um, ensure all the people in Ramsey County on it and I don't see how we can do it without a special fund, like some of the western counties have their, their oil revenue funds that they can, that they can use. But we don't have that. I know that Kristen and, and Lonnie and Elizabeth have all talked at length about it, but, I mean, we can't use the pop fund to buy coffee for meetings, so, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty tight. The state has some pretty, pretty strict rules on what you could use taxpayers' money for, so. I'm not seeing where we're gonna be able to wiggle at all with it.
You need to drill a few wells.
Yeah, we need a couple wells. Well, and then, you know.
That one they have to produce.
Yeah. That's something to have to come up with.
So, anybody else got anything to add to the Valeant flight information? Cell phone discussion?
I finally got ahold of Pam from AT&amp;T and we scheduled a meeting for May eighteenth at two P.M. for whoever wants to come. And it's basically she can go over her plan and see what she can, um, give us like Verizon did, the usage of it, so we did a better, um, dollar figure. I think right now, we're pretty high for the usage, for what usage we have on the plan. And there is some new phones that are coming out that are free and I think the shore department probably is ready for new ones, but I don't know what the highway.
Probably.
Social services just got. So, that's something she'll bring forward too, so. And mostly if we can get them for ninety-nine cents or free, then I'm free to apply and get a better rate. So, May eighteenth at two P.M. if anybody.
Do you wanna send something to all the departments and, and let them know, so, um, does this become a, 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 a?
Uh, they have their own plan and I think they were paying their end of it just so much stipend per phone, but I can sure send it.
Yeah, because they might wanna go under our, because there wasn't.
Well, they'll have to have their own plan because.
Right. Yeah, but they might get, you know, get a better deal, so maybe let, maybe let it all, and, um, Rhonda know.
Oh, right. Rhonda knows and she said she can't make it, yeah.
Okay, but Christie, Christie was. Yeah, Christie's kind of a money person, great, so she would.
And I thought it would be good if we taped it just in case some people couldn't make it, they could review the date then.
All right, thank you. Um, then we have, uh, approval of a raffle permit for Lakewood's Sports Club. Olson, Brown, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Your nominations, welcome. Kelsey, welcome.
Paul? Oh, uh, she can go first, that's fine.
Oh, no, I don't have any.
No, she's a burping.
Don't want to get in anybody's way. Good morning. I just, uh, had a few questions for the board this morning. Uh, I don't have a prepared statement. It was just questions about some of the recent things that have been going on at the LEC. They have nothing to do with the investigation of the, by the Labor Department, so I'm hoping you guys can answer open and looking freely. My first question is, uh, about the security audit that was mentioned during the special time county meeting. And I was just curious when that was scheduled or if it's occurred already? Hasn't occurred already, are you thinking of? Most, I guess most of these are gonna be for you, Ed, but I mean, anybody can answer this, so thank you.
I think it's coming up in May.
May?
I think it said in the paper, Phil, I would.
Um, next question is, uh, when was the board notified of the escape? Uh, were, were, was this board notified or was it just the LEC?
It was the LEC board.
Okay. Were you or the board part of the decision to not, uh, let the public know about it, or?
The public was notified.
I'm sorry?
The public was notified.
Yeah, I think it was about twelve hours later, correct? It was not late? All right, I'll double check on that for you. And I'd also like to ask why the administrator made the board, I don't know which, um, decided to kinda downplay the risk of the inmates who escaped.
Well, I think there was a decision made that he was known not to be, uh, dangerous.
Okay. Just judging by his, whatever he's arrested for?
He had felony charges, but I'm not sure. He had a number of charges.
Oh, there's a number of charges. Um, carrying concealed weapon, burglary, burglary, theft, counterfeiting, flanking from police, attempting to loot police officers, uh, forgery, theft of property, theft of property, escape. So, clearly, that to me does sound like a low-risk inmate, but, uh, I'm just curious why that decision was made.
I'm not there on a day-to-day basis.
No, I understand.
You know, I don't communicate with them on a day-to-day basis. I mean, they're hired to run that place, not me. I'm overseeing as a board and that's how we do it.
Okay. And it's nothing personally against, uh, Mr. Ryan. Um, I do believe, you know, it's a, it's a tough position to be in. I think back to the meeting where Mr. Burns was removed from that board as head, which you're head of now. And I believe that was for something as simple as not agreeing with the rest of the board here and he was subsequently removed. Do you feel that you should be the head of that board if you don't know what's going on there day by day?
That's a question, what do you? We'll pass, huh?
I'm sorry?
Go call it, I guess.
Okay, well, that seems a little bit more serious than a board member not agreeing with the board. Uh, I guess that's all I'm trying to say. Is there any truth to the fact that there were federal inmates yanked out of the LEC because of this escape?
I'm not aware of that.
You're not aware of that either? Okay, well, it's, it's kind of the talk that there were federal inmates that were removed from the LEC, and those are kind of the big bill-paying customers, so to speak.
I think the other day they had 85 or 90, I don't know, I don't know if they were working right now.
Okay.
They escaped, that's why I thought it was a problem, so.
Right. I guess I'd like to reference an article that was dated June 11th, 2015, that references the Lake Region Jail beef sub-security after inmate escaped. That was when they had the help from the jailer and the guy who took off for the ORC later. What exactly was beefed up that happened?
I don't know, I don't remember.
And this isn't all for you, I mean, if anybody else knows, that's fine too. I'll take answers from anybody. Okay. Well, I guess the last thing I have to show just before I close is an article, I don't know how the LEC is doing financially now, I understand that they need a certain amount of inmates to sustain.
Well, Mr. Deegan.
Yes, sir.
You know, the books are open to the public, you can go and read that you want, if you want to.
Oh, I know, I make requests, I don't, what I'm saying is I don't know currently, because I didn't check. But I, I will be, I mean, I check on these things before I come in. I would like to show an article that was dated February 18th, 1951, where the law enforcement center was actually possibly closing due to financial problems, inmate problems, staff problems, the same thing we're having now. So what's getting better?
I guess the door's still open, so I guess that's.
The door's still open, I would agree with you. Anything else on that?
We've turned my time, so.
Well, we're seeing it come back around in this year time, or our time, I guess we can say. Got a little bit of time left, anybody can answer?
I'd just like to make a comment on this. We're seeing people not wanting to be at the law enforcement center anymore, we had an escape with a corrections officer a year ago, we had another escape last week, we had people leave for work release, not come back and stuff like that. You know, experience costs a lot of money, and costs a lot of reputational injuries. We never had that, these issues before.
Before when?
In 20 years prior to the current administration, we never had these kind of issues because, because these people who are in corrections are in confinement, they have issues and they have lost their right to freedom, but they have not lost their other rights. They have rights to see a nurse, they have rights to go get a telephone call, they have rights to exercise, they have rights to go to the commissary and get necessary needs and stuff like that. If those needs aren't being met, and people feel that they'll risk a five-year federal sentence for escape, simply because they're not happy there, they're not contented there, when they only simply had six months left to serve on a sentence, we need to do something because it's hurting the reputation of the law enforcement center, it's hurting the reputation of your board members, it's hurting the reputation of the administration out there, and it's causing problems in the community here. We need to get some things fixed out there, you guys. They're worse, their problems are worse now than they were before, and you let people go for less than that, they had 20 years of experience, and people who were very good at their jobs. This is getting to be habitual, and this downplaying this prisoner escape when he's got felonies on his record and stuff like that, and saying over the air that you didn't, that you don't have to give public notice to that, ask the public if they need notice for that. The vote will come in 100%. I don't care what the lie.
So, Bill, let me just ask you this, do you feel that the problems at the jail are a result of the inmates being unhappy, so we need to do something to make 91 inmates happier? You want to make them happier and more content? I would love to see how you do that.
Happy wouldn't be the correct word, but contented.
Okay, so you want, you want, that's why, that's why we have problems at the law enforcement center?
Absolutely.
Because the prisoners are not content?
Absolutely.
And, and that's because of what? Because their, because their rights, they're not allowed phone calls and they're not, how do you know these things, that they're not allowed phone calls?
Well, why would you?
You're supposing it's because they're not contented?
That's right.
I would agree 100%. I just, I would agree 100%.
Well, I'm happy, Bill, I'm happy that you guys have to answer, and I'm really hoping that you will have some constructive ways to keep prisoners in the law enforcement center content, because that's what I'm hearing today.
I would say respect is probably one of the biggest ones.
You know.
No, no, we're talking about contentment of prisoners here.
Wesley Brown wrote a letter and told him that he was going to leave.
Yeah, and he was a key prisoner, and he was a key prisoner. And I find that very interesting, that there's a three-page letter from a convicted felon who has already escaped, who was placed on work release within the jail, who's already escaped from another facility, and he tells you he's going to escape if he doesn't, if it isn't nice enough in there? Come on, Bill, let's not even start this.
He wasn't, he wasn't on work release, believe me.
Well, he wasn't anyhow.
Like I said before, Myrna, these people are, the people that work at the law enforcement center are outnumbered 20 to 30 to 1 back there. It's not an easy job, but they do have to keep all those people contented, and when they're not content, and they will risk five-year sentences so they don't have to live six more months in that place, there's something wrong. They have rights, and people have to respect those rights, and they've been respected in the past, and it's got to come back to that, because people will keep believing in it. And believe me, they can. They'll find a way. And it's not good for anybody.
This is what I've been putting forward to you guys, you guys don't understand because you're not at that level, and I get that, you don't know what you don't know. Okay, if you were to spend some time back there, have some real time back there, not a lot.
Don't ever plan to do that, don't ever, I have no plans. Does anyone here have any plans to spend time at the law enforcement center so that you can find out whether you're content and, and whether or not you have respect for the people who are in charge of your incarceration? If you do have at it, I have no intention of spending time behind bars at the law enforcement center to figure out what's wrong.
Well, then you're part of the problem.
When's the last time you were in jail?
Are you saying that you're going to be charged for the crime and put in jail?
How much, how else to get back there?
This is exactly what I'm talking about.
As commissioners and board members and stuff like that, you have every opportunity to go to that jail and figure out, help figure out what the problem is, but you shouldn't need to be, because the administration should know it.
Is there anything else you'd like to add today, Mr. Deegan?
I want to think we've covered it quite well.
I think you did a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll be back.
Madam Chairman, there's one more issue we should bring up on the highway side. Report update on Ramsey County 8, what we're doing there now.
Okay, I guess we're, on that last question, we need to assign the design contract for Schindler's Overlake from Webster to have my own piece for Riley Street, and I guess I would unload the culverts after that, and we just, we scoped out replacing the culverts with the same size in the design fee, and I went and looked at them, and one of the sites had three 6-foot diameter culverts right next to each other, and they're a little too short, and they're, say, quite a bit, they're going to be replaced for sure. So I don't know, we're doing a hydraulic analysis right now to see what they can be replaced with, whether it's culvert, if they're big enough, we'll put the same thing back in, there won't be any issue, but there might, it might take a little more to replace those if the box don't receive it.
So that box is like a mile and a half east?
Oh, 1.8 miles, I think.
Almost two miles. East of Webster.
Round eight.
Round eight, yeah.
East to what? Those will be getting replaced.
And they're 3/6 footers in there, about?
Yeah.
Kind of cost, has that been involved, can you give us a rough estimate?
I guess the box culvert above Ramsey 9, last time around was around $300,000, I think.
We're going to try to see if metal ones will work better, just to try and speed things up a little bit, that's, that's a ballpark figure for you.
And we, we already got owned on the ground survey and the protective core, and I think they'll be okay with the office elimination of weapons, so.
One box removed, much as the 3/6es?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and hopefully they'll be able to, the metal pipes, ultimately they'll get by, put metal pipes back in, just doesn't look after design rules, it doesn't take a month to make a metal culvert as opposed to a box.
And it's delayed.
Yeah, it's been shut down a lot for shorter times, so.
The water board's got recommendations on that there.
Well, no, we're going for the engineers, I mean, they would go to the engineer and get a recommendation, so we're skipping that, Brown.
They invited us to do those before, so.
So we're skipping the water board, that's the question.
Do you need a motion?
No, we just wanted to.
Just wanted to bring us up to speak then?
Can you roll that when?
We're doing work on our analysis right now, we don't have the yard survey last week, so.
Next month, right?
I should have the results back over the next meeting here. But I push back whether we can get that job, I think it, mostly they'll get paid done this year and get that, but that's the goal. When the other AICs come along, it should be okay.
That's it, yes, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak today? We'll move on to the report on portfolios. Hi, Adam, you want to start?
Yes, of course. We had Katie in here who took care of the problem we had with images, so that's good. Everything else over there, we're looking quietly, other than discussing with her at length, a little week ago, she was put on an advisory board by the state, Andy ACO, to look at the fee schedules, look at charging for the documents that are coming in, so there's possible, possible change with that. They're just looking at it right now, nothing, they don't have a recommendation or anything, but how fees are being charged here versus how fees are being charged in the oil-producing counties, it's the same, but it's not, it's detrimental to oil-producing counties is what the claim is, so they're looking at possibly changing how they do that, but I'll keep you updated as that comes forward. That'll have to be a legislative change, that's all in century code, but they're looking at possibly making a change.
With the number of documents that have to get filed for the oil rights and stuff like that, it just, it just bolts up, not so much that it costs so much to record a document out there that people can't.
Yeah, there's, there's some documents that Katie said, they'll be 200 pages long with all, and every line item costs a certain amount, so there's documents they'll file that are 10, it'll be a $10,000 document. And it would be beneficial to make, they're struggling with how to make the changes, it would be beneficial to the oil country, but then at the same time, it would, it would cost our individuals in this county much more on smaller documents, because it would be a higher upfront fee is what they're looking at now, so they're trying to figure out how to make that work, so it's not going to detrimentally affect people, the eastern part of the state that aren't dealing with the oil impacts. Treasurer's Office, nothing too crazy going on there, from what I could tell, everything seemed to be running well. County Housing Authority, we had our last meeting, like I brought up, the meeting before, it's been on the media too, we've looked at the possibility of doing a 24-unit apartment building. It's going to be built, it's just a matter of if we get behind it on the financial side of things. There's hip funds available and interest rate buy-down, so that's how the affordability of the apartment complex would come in. Haven't proved anything yet, we saw numbers, preliminary numbers at the last meeting, so we're kind of taking a look at that, and then we'll probably be, I don't know if we approve it next meeting or trying to look or approve it next meeting now, but that's , that's on the plates over there. Chamber, last meeting, we talked a little bit about fishing terming, most pre-registered individuals ever for the fishing terming, correct?
Right.
Lot of, lot of interest in that, so that's a good thing. We talked about the possibility of a convention center that obviously the city's been looking into, and location, and the possibility of hiring off the tourism side of things, as well as for Devils Lake City, which has constantly on consultant to look into how we could make, how they would make that work, so that's kind of things that are happening over there. Anything to add on the chamber side of things?
I was going to mention on the chamber side, the motor vehicle end of it, we're looking at a new computer system that we'll be implementing in June, actually we'll roll it out June 13th. They'll be going for training this week on it called the STAR system, we'll be getting a press release out on that.
And that's, that's all I have, oh, and attend care, nothing new about what we talked about last meeting.
I just signed the bills, I see you got a lot of people qualified to work in attendant care now with the CPR and first aid training.
Yeah, they've been doing a good job, getting everything lined up, and everything seems to be working well, what I've been doing so far, so, so far so good.
Anything on the cameras?
Not that I've been, not that I've heard yet, we'll probably meet, I'm guessing, again fairly quickly here. Steve was going to be working, checking some local bids, and then working also with Chief Roderick to try to figure out where they could get cameras and try to keep it as affordable as possible so they could get it under his budget now, he figured he had enough money in there to make it work, so, but they were just doing some research, so hopefully we can get something out through the next while here.
Airport is continuing to see increases in boarding and stuff, and it looks like our air carrier is onboard and wanting to keep serving Devils Lake, so one of the main focuses that we have right now is getting fuel for that plane out there. We have a couple different people that are trying to work on that. It's, it's important because we have missed flights coming in the Devils Lake, they can fuel in Jamestown, but when we get full planes, they need to make sure that they can fuel the Devils Lake as well, and so that's one of the issues that we're, and our parking lot needs to be examined again, so that's a good problem there. Another thing that, last week I was in Bismarck again for the North Dakota Association of Counties Board meeting, and we have the analysis done from the strategic filing that we did, and I'm going to leave all this information with Elizabeth so that she can have it for file, and anybody can review it or get copies of it and stuff, but it's very interesting. There is going to be an increase in our dues coming up, they're, they're going to be about 5% per year, and one thing I want to stress is that the core services that, that the Association of Counties provides is the only thing that those monies are used for. All the offshoots, things that they do for us that we pay other services for or other people pay services for are not part of the dues. On the back of the page here, it shows what the dues are going to go to and how every county, how they assess each county, and it's basically tied to affordability, and when you get to the big counties and they can afford a lot more, what they did is they set a limit that they can, they can't pay any more than five times the average payment from any county, so. So then it gets a portion down, and it goes by affordability, so everybody is paying pretty close to exactly what they give them for, in the eyes of the Association of Counties, and it's very fair. We had a survey that we put out on the board oversight and direction setting for the interpretation of the goals of the strategic plan, and it shows that what the board thought in their survey was that that was very much. that was very much in fact what the Association of Counties was doing for matching their goals. So that was very good. Uh, there's a sheet in here that is tied to the county primary election information. It shows all the information of who's running in each county, who's not running in each county. And, um, and some other information that you might find really valuable or kind of interesting. Um, like I said, I'll leave all this information with Elizabeth and she can share that with anybody that she'd like to. And she can keep it on file in case anybody wants to review it. That's a lot of nice information. That's, that's all.
That's it? Okay, Ed?
Yeah, we heard from Elizabeth and the tax director. Uh, social services is going well, I guess, up there. Teen year meals, I can get a review, so.
Mark? Okay, I just have a few things. Uh, the sheriff's department, we, we heard from Kristen. It basically just spent the whole weekend and such on the fire call deal, we've kinda taken care of that. Uh, the museum, we have a new director in place, she's working. We had the gala, which is a huge fundraiser for us. We had a hundred percent sell-out, huge crowd, it went very, very, very well. Lots of comments and all good. And I am like Ed, I'm gonna make a statement about the law enforcement center. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste any time fighting and arguing with anybody here about what I'm gonna say. I'm just gonna make a statement. Uh, Mr. Deegan seemed to be very concerned about the law enforcement center. This is a five-county system. He has only been to Ramsey County, he has never been to another county. He has been concerned, he has not been to the law enforcement center board meeting since he's brought in all these straits to our commission. Um, there have been escapes in the past, there's been many escapes over the years in the past. Uh, the re-entry center is a new facility, they're not escaping. The, the, the judges are letting them out on work release. We can't control what they do after they get out on work release. Um, there, we have a full staff, we have not had a full staff for years and years and years. We are completely full, we have a full staff, nine-one-one is full. The center is functioning very well. Um, the big point that I want to make is he sat here and he told us how concerned he was. He has not been to one law enforcement center meeting where all of his questions could be answered. And that's my only statement I'm gonna make, I'm not gonna waste time fighting and, and pulling hair with each other here. That's my only statement for today. Thank you, Mira.
Okay, um, district health met last week. We have some new policies in place for, um, sewers and, and, um, environmental health, it's very interesting. Uh, we're very concerned about cuts across the board from the state because we already work on a bare-bones budget. Of note, we're losing a seasoned RN because there's absolutely no daycare available for her. Uh, social services has been running well. They have jumped in with both feet, unattended care, as Adam mentioned. Uh, I met with the district court administrator, we have a new district court administrator, his name is Scott Johnson. I met with him in detail, in depth, for about an hour and a half last week. Um, he left me his card, if anyone is interested in visiting with him, I'd be happy to share that with you. One of his main concerns is increased security in the court system. There are some, um, grants available through emergency services that we'll need to be working on. He, um, we don't, um, we don't really know what's gonna happen upstairs based on, you know, people running for office as far as the judgeship, as far as the state's attorney's office. Um, those are decisions that the county commission will be asked to deal with in the coming months. Um, so that's something that we all need to be thinking about. Um, Elizabeth is here, I don't know if she has anything that she wants to add. They're very busy getting the absentee ballots out for the election in, the election in June as well as the November election. Uh, there's a groundbreaking ceremony at Grams Island. I'm hoping you all got a, um, email from Mr. Wetzel, it's kind of short notice. But, um, we'll be, we'll be, um, I'll be out there on Wednesday for that. Uh, I have contacted the North Dakota Association of Counties on, looking for some advice on policies for the county as far as the county commission. Um, we have talked at, at length about having to sort of fly by the seat of our pants. Um, seems like every meeting we have, someone comes in and wants a variance to what a policy is. And, um, I'm asking for some help from, um, Mr. Burse and Chuck, is it Chuck order? Yep, on that, um, I should be hearing from them soon. Forward Devil's Lake, um, I was unable to attend the full board meeting. We have, again, several new members. There's not much I can say about Alprin because of pending litigation. We have had some very positive response from American Republic of Retinaries. I believe that the bill for the study that was done will be paid by the end of this month. We are still accepting applications from the library for a new library board director. Um, we got a preliminary, um, budget draft from the old director and, um, we're talking about possibly adding about eleven thousand dollars to the budget. Um, as you guys all know, Mr. Chapman has, has worked, um, far below what the, what a person in his position would normally work for for years. He's a, he's a military retiree and was able and very willing to do that. We have concerns that we might not get that lucky this time. Um, so there will be a request for, I, I, I'm thinking like eleven thousand dollars and our budgets from the city and the county are pretty even. Um, at this point, the city used to pay a lot more, but as our, as our mill rates have gone up, we, um, we now pay more than the city does for the library or are very close. Um, so I'm thinking it's gonna be about fifty-five hundred dollars that will be asked for, for an increase. And that might be covered, that might be covered by the increase in revenue on property taxes. The time will tell and we know that it's, that's fair and that the need is there, so we'll be working on that. That's all I have, thank you. Um, as far as announcements, um, I'm sure all of you are aware because I changed the date of the meeting that the Devil, that the Devil's Lake Outlet Advisory Committee meeting is tomorrow at nine AM. And I would really like to see, and I know it's a tough time of year. I've got two farmers and a, and a greenhouse owner here, so I know it's a tough time of the year to get away for four or five hours, but I think it's very important. You guys all know that we sent a letter to the governor thanking him for having the gates open, um, on the pumping stations and asking that that continues. Um, I did state that tens of thousands of acres of deeded farmland remain inundated along with roads, cemeteries and farmsteads still under water that it is imperative that the outlets continue to operate at full capacity. I know that raises a lot of issues with, um, the fishery and the tourism. It's a fine line, you know, it'll be interesting to hear what the state's plans are. Um, downstream, they need water. I visited with the mayor of Fargo over the weekend. We're hopeful that it will continue. Um, any other announcements?
I am on the committee that serves with the different agencies and the government for the outlet advisory and I will carry that message down there. I'd like to have some copies made of it so I can hand them out. Have them on the table so people can see that, I'll carry that message to the governor and, uh, and, um, on that note, um, this, uh, I, I struggle with this meeting because, it, it, it did become a special meeting when we changed it because of that other meeting and I can appreciate that part of it, but, um, what I'd like to do, Mira, is eight o'clock on Monday mornings is time when people are reorganizing over the weekend and trying to get crews ready to go. I don't think I was the only one that would have asked to have it at a little bit different time. Special meetings can be set for any time, but, uh, were all the rest of the board members notified that the meeting was gonna be changed because I wasn't? And I want to know why. I would have suggested it be eight-thirty or, as you can see, we are, we are done early. It wasn't a long meeting, so, um, I want to know why I wasn't notified. Or asked, you know, when you called her up and asked her when we could have a special meeting, like, why didn't you call me?
I notified and talked to all of the department heads. I thought that was the very most important thing. Uh, I think it's important that our department heads are all able to attend. Um, I also notified and talked to, well, everyone who was on the agenda. Uh, I'm sorry that you were the last to be called, but, um.
I wasn't calling you.
You were, you were emailed and then I called and talked to you at length.
Well, it was already set.
And you chastised me because you don't believe I'm running the commission properly. This is not a special meeting, it's a change of, of time because I felt that the Devil's Lake Outlet Advisory Board meeting was very important. I knew you could, you, you yourself could not be here if I left the meeting at eight o'clock on Tuesday morning. And now I'm being chastised for changing it? Excuse me. I made this decision, I made this decision as chairman of the board and I stand by it. If you have any other input, I would appreciate if you do it some other time.
I was, I was not only called in and asked when the meeting would be sufficient, there was two people that were told that you weren't gonna call. And I think that's wrong.
Well, I'm not gonna apologize if that's what you're looking for, Mira, thank you. Um, did everybody get the notice, um, from Mark Shipley on the road count on the coal road? Something to think about? Sixty, sixty thousand vehicles on the road in sixty-seven days last year? Um, we need to find an answer to it. We will be still in the process of setting up a committee to deal with, um, how we can help the townships. Special assessment seems to be the only way we can do it. However, um, I seriously doubt that one-tenth of that traffic on there is from the full-time residents of the area. So I'm hoping we can find another means of assisting them with, um, keeping and maintaining the road. Anything else to come before the board today? Or would you?